All right, this device can have my firstborn child got it. Okay, get my gavel up, make it official. And good morning, I'm gonna go ahead and call this session the City of Seidra Woolley Hearing Examiner to order for the record. Today is June 2nd, 2022 at 10 a.m. We have one item on the agenda today, this is number CUP 2022-090, involving a request for approval of a conditional use permit to allow construction of a new roughly 2,300 square foot residential duplex on a point eight acre now vacant property in the Central Business District at 616 Puget Street. My name is Ada Reeves, I'm a hearing examiner with Sound Law Center, who the city has selected to hold certain land use application hearings like this one. And today will be my role to collect evidence in the form of exhibits and testimony to determine whether this proposal is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, zoning ordinances and critical areas ordinances and to determine whether it meets the specific criteria for approval of a conditional use permit under chapter 1756 of the Seidra Woolley Municipal Code. To that end, I received several exhibits in advance of the hearing that I had an opportunity to review. These include a staff report prepared by city staff, the application materials themselves, which did include addressing the criteria for a conditional use permit as part of those materials. Information on the notice that went out in relation to the application as well as today's hearing, as well as review comments from the department in reviewing this permit. I did, I was told in advance of the hearing that we may have additional exhibits and we'll deal with those in just a sec. But for now, I'll go ahead and admit exhibits A through G into the record. Our testimony today will be under oath or affirmation, that's because we're my decision to be appealed under our state's Land Use Petition Act or LUPA. The recording of today's hearing as well as the admitted exhibits and my decision would serve as the foundation for any such appeal. I may and sometimes do ask questions of those that are testifying, not trying to trip anyone up, just trying to ensure I have a thorough understanding of the proposal so that within 10 business days of the record closing, I'm able to produce a decision that is hopefully clear and legally defensible. Finally, the order that we typically follow and I believe we're gonna follow today is first I'll swear in city staff, who will give a brief overview of the proposal and the review process that led us to our hearing today. Then we'll hear from our applicant team, as it were, who will have an opportunity to present any additional information they feel that myself or members of the public should be aware of in advance of my making a decision. And then we'll see if there are any members of the public interested in testifying. Currently, it does not appear we have any members of the public that have joined us, but we'll check back in at that point in the hearing just to make sure. And if there are any members of the public interested, they will have that opportunity. And then if necessary, at the end, we'll go back to the applicant team and city staff to respond to any such testimony. So that's the order we're gonna follow. I thank everyone for being here and with that, I'll get Nicole McGowan sworn in. Good morning, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today? And could you just clearly spell your name for the audio and explain your role here at the city?
Sure, I'm Nicole McGowan, that's N-I-C-O-L-E-M-C-G-O-W-A-N. And I am the Assistant Planner with the City of Seidra Woolley, I'll be covering our staff report in this hearing.
Okay. Thank you for being here, go right ahead.
Okay, so just jump right in, so a demolition permit was obtained originally to demolish a portion of the single family residence that was originally on site. That application was revised mid-process to instead allow the full removal of the structure. So the lot now sits vacant, ready for development. Pre-application meeting was held with the applicant back in February 16th, 2022. We do have some staff comments from that and that is in the exhibits, staff report. So the applicant was required to submit a conditional use permit for their project proposal to construct a multifamily structure independent of commercial use within the downtown core. That area is designated, the area designated as the downtown core is established in Title 16 of the municipal code. Let's see, it's 1724010A3 says that multifamily housing between two and four units per building may be allowed independent of commercial uses outside of the area boarded by the tracks to the west, Puget Street to the east, the tracks to the north and Warner Street to the south, also excluded as property funding on Metcalf Street, West Ferry Street, West State Street and property abutting the tracks between Rita and Wally Street. So the subject property actually falls within these boundaries and is considered within that downtown core. So hence the need for the conditional use permit to allow the multifamily independent of commercial use. The Central Business District is meant to provide goods and services to residents of Seidra Woolley and so that's why we asked that there be a commercial aspect to residential uses in the area, but we also understand that the subject property has been used for residential purposes independent of commercial use since at least 1905. All adjacent properties facing Puget Street are also currently being used for residential purposes without a commercial aspect too. So staff finds that it would be reasonable to allow the property to be developed as a duplex independent of commercial use as it would fit well with what's already in the area and otherwise conforms to the comprehensive plan goals and policies. You'll see that staff has recommended approval with conditions in that staff report. And the conditions are as follows, so elevations will need to be provided with the building permit application to show that the building height will not exceed 60 feet max and to ensure that building design meets design review under chapter 2, 3 and 5 of the Design Standards and Guidelines Manual. There were elevations submitted during the pre-application meeting, just not with the conditional use permit, so it's to our knowledge, things haven't changed, but we'll need to see that again at the building permit. The applicant submitted a floor plan similarly with the pre-application perils. That's in exhibit F. They showed three bedrooms per unit there, so parking standards in the CBD are based on the number of bedrooms and per that table in 17, 1724050, six total parking spaces will be required. So the floor plan again hasn't changed to our knowledge, but we'll need to see that with the building permit application so that we know exactly how many bedrooms are going to be involved. We did want to point out that in the CBD, we ask that buildings do be constructed up to the property line. There's no minimum setbacks in the CBD. So there, on the site plan, you'll see that there are three proposed parking spaces located at the front of the property with access to Puget Street. Staff would like to aim to move all that parking to the rear with access off the alley if possible for aesthetic purposes and to keep with code requirements. We also recognize that the lot is small and dimensions may not allow for all six parking spaces to fit at the rear, so. Leave that kind of.
The goal is to sort of create that commercial looking street facade, as it were. I recognize it's not a commercial structure, but the idea that if you're walking down the sidewalk, it sort of feels like you're in a commercial district.
Right, right, because in most other cases, we do ask that parking be screened. The goal is to ensure that parking doesn't interfere with architectural features and the overall design and character of the development. So yeah. Then two address signs will be needed to be placed on the facade facing Puget Street so that way we can clearly indicate the addresses and the locations of both duplex units. And they'll need to be clearly visible from the street. The applicant will need to obtain permits for the site development and construction of the duplex. Impact fees and general facilities charges will be assessed and collected at the rate adopted by ordinance at the time of building permit issuance. Lighting for construction must be shielded from shining onto adjacent residential properties or roadways. And then lastly, the applicant will need to demonstrate compliance with state and local stormwater regulations, including but not limited to providing quality and quantity controls. And that just about covers it, do you have any questions, Andrew?
Sure, thank you. I guess, working backward, do you happen to know what stormwater manual the city is using at the moment and would be required for the applicant to use?
John, I might need help with that one.
And I do have a hand raised from John Coleman, so why don't we just get John Coleman sworn in?
All right.
Thank you, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
Yes.
Hey, could you just spell your name clearly for the audio and explain your role here at the city?
My name is John Coleman, as you can see from the video, it's J-O-H-N-C-O-L-E-M-A-N. And I'm the Planning Director and Building Official.
And thank you for being here, go right ahead, sir.
So the, we've adopted the most current, the Department of Ecology Stormwater Manual per engineering department standards, I believe it's 2017, but I can't keep track sometimes.
It's okay, I, if it's the most current, I can find it, I think it was 2012 with 2014 updates and then I think finally 2017 or 18 was, I think they might have finally replaced the 2012 manual, but I can figure it out, so.
And I just wanted to add one thing about about the parking. So the parking requirements that apply to this project are, it's the table and number 1724050B5 and that states parking for residential buildings that do not include commercial uses shall be accessed from the alley when an alley exists and an alley does exist here, so that's one of the requirements. As Nicole mentioned, also under bulk restrictions, there is no minimum setback, but there is a maximum setback of, of 10 feet and you are only supposed to, so buildings are supposed to be built up to the front property line. You can move it 10 feet back maximum if you incorporate pedestrian features, so that would be, you know, like a seating area for a restaurant, for example, or some sort of public square. So those are the two sections of code, 1724020A and then 1724050B5 are the two that, having the parking in front are problematic. And so I kind of see that as like the only sticking point on this proposal, so I suggest that we discuss that.
Sure. Anything else, Mr. Coleman? So I don't know, okay. The only other question I specifically had for staff was a general one I generally ask, which is has the comprehensive plan or zoning ordinances, have they been amended or changed in any significant way that would impact this proposal since the application was deemed complete?
No.
Okay. Well, again, I think with the caveat that we will discuss parking here in a minute with the applicant, but I think I have the questions answered from city staff that I needed answered, so thank you, Ms. McGowan. At this point, why don't we go to Cheryl Carmen on behalf of our applicant? And I'm gonna swear you in, thank you for being here, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in testimony you give here today?
I do.
And could you just clearly spell your name for the audio recording?
Cheryl Carmen, S-H-E-R-Y-L-C-A-R-M-A-N.
Great, thank you for being here, so and this is your opportunity to present any additional information and then as well, there's been a request to talk about the conceptual idea of where the parking would occur and if moving the parking so that is, it is accessible off the alley would create any problems in your mind?
So I don't have any additional information other than the parking. The units that we are looking at building are three bedroom. So according to the city, that would be three parking spaces per unit and they're supposed to be nine feet and so that's 27 feet of our 30 foot width of the property. So putting three in the front and three in the back meet the requirements for parking, but I mean, I understand their concern of being up front. We could modify the plans to do two bedrooms and make the other a den so that we would need four parking spots. So we're open to that change if we need to make that. But, you know, with only 30 feet width and nine feet per spot, even coming in off the alley, we would have a hard time getting four spots in back there. So that was why the request for the front and the back.
Got it, okay, and independent of the parking issue, so really it's, the site is limited and in the width which would allow essentially, you know, to have six parking spaces would be a challenge regardless. But you think four would potentially be doable in the back, is that the basic idea?
Yes.
So it's. That's okay.
Yeah. What happens when you work from home, sorry, if somebody walks by the house.
The nerve, the nerve of someone to walk by the house, they clearly don't realize we're doing important duty at the moment.
Yeah, so we're willing to work with, you know, what your recommendation is. But I think it would still be can't remember the length, but it's like 100. There's a lot of property, you know, we have a lot of room in the front and the back to be able to put the parking places in if that's allowed.
Okay. And in terms of the other recommended conditions of approval, any issue that the applicant saw in relation to those recommended conditions?
No, like she said, we have already turned in the elevations earlier with the pre-hearing, we've got a floor plan. The parking was the one, no problem with the signs and getting the permit, so the rest of that is no problem.
Okay. Great, thank you, I do think we, we forgot something, Ms. McGowan, you said there may have been an additional comment or a public comment that came in, I had exhibits A through G and I just want to make sure if there were that both I see it and that our applicant sees it, so that.
Sure. How would you like me to do that, I can share a screen or?
Yeah, that'd be fine, and could you just tell me while you're doing that, sort of what it was, was it just an additional?
Yeah, so I did get a comment on March 23rd from a Robin Howard. Let's see, living at 720 Puget Street, Seidra Woolley, Washington. I can go ahead and share screen here, one second.
You'll have, you'll have to email that to Andrew already, if you haven't already.
And.
Can you, is that okay?
Yeah.
We'll go ahead and read it. Good afternoon, this is regarding the public hearing coming up to the duplex on Puget Street. We drive by daily and notice there are already multiple cars parked in the street and sometimes on the sidewalks at the house next door. And were previously parked at this house as well. Will there be parking out back for the renters? As longtime resident and business owner in Seidra Woolley, we already have a terrible time getting across Highway 20, coming from the north side of Reed Street to work mornings and evenings. With all the new housing developments and people coming into the area, the transportation needs to be urgently addressed. I called last year and was just told of the 20, 30, 50 year plans in place, that is much too long for something to be done about the roads. Also for the environment and the aesthetics of the city, can all new developments be asked to provide some landscaping and at least one to two trees per house built? We need to keep the city looking nice to bring in new people and businesses along with keeping crime lower. Anyway, if you can pass that on as my input, I would much appreciate it, thank you, Robin Howard.
Great, so I'm gonna make that exhibit H and you know, I note three, it seems like three concerns, one actually has to do with where will people park? And if parking isn't back, that takes care of concern one, concern two is I think beyond the scope necessarily of what this applicant would be asked to address unless voluntarily this applicant can solve all of Seidra Woolley's traffic and infrastructure concerns and if they're willing to do so, I'm sure Mr. Coleman would be happy about that, but I, I'll let city staff speak to the idea of how, you know, sort of long-term planning works and then finally, Ms. McGowan, if you happen to know whether there are any specific landscaping requirements that you can speak to, that would be great.
In the, in the Central Business District, there's actually no landscaping required. And that's part of the whole, we ask that property or construction be all the way up to the property line.
Got it. And in terms of just sort of longer term concerns expressed by this resident about, you know, traffic congestion, et cetera, if either you or Mr. Coleman can just very quickly speak to sort of, you know, how does that work and how does this proposal fit in, et cetera?
John, do you think I could get some help with that?
Specifically, the question was the long-term traffic?
Well, just this, so obviously, we address traffic on a project by project basis in this room, you know, I, I'm not asked to sort of weigh in on the comprehensive plan itself, but in terms of this project, is the determination that there's this project itself by just creating a duplex, there would be no trigger, I assume, in terms of traffic impact that would require a traffic impact analysis or anything to that effect, is that an accurate assumption on my part?
Correct, there's, you know, something to the effect of, you know, somewhere around 12 units starts to possibly trigger the requirement for transportation reports done for a project. That's Public Works standards again, that I'm not entirely well-versed in, but duplex certainly wouldn't. Now, traffic impact fees are paid by all new units. This, this house, there was a house here, so that if they were to build a duplex, they would pay for, they would pay traffic impact fees for just one unit, the new additional unit, not the replacement unit of the existing unit, you know, like, kind of get an exemption for houses that existed that they tear down.
Great, and while I have you, Mr. Coleman, back to the parking, is it, in your view, would the parking in the rear be a requirement as opposed to a suggestion? And if it is a requirement, are there alternative options to the extent that, you know, can the applicant, if they really want, you know, to allow for two, three bedroom units, can they enter into an agreement with the neighboring property owner to purchase space, the applicants indicated they could theoretically do four bedrooms and make it work, I'm just trying to, I guess, one thought I had, well, first, how about I let you answer one thing first? In your mind, would it be a requirement that it be in the alley versus the suggestion, that would be question one?
So to answer question one, it is a requirement per 1724.
You said it earlier, I think I have it written down, there were the two.
02, oh, 1724050 B5, parking for residential buildings that do not include commercial use shall be accessed from the alley when an alley exists, that goes on to also say, as is relevant to this conversation, rooms indicated on building plans as office, extra room, playroom or other rooms such as a den that may reasonably be considered for use as a bedroom, maybe counted as bedrooms for parking purposes by the planning director, so simply taking a three bedroom and calling it a two bedroom still requires a, requires it to be parking, have enough parking for three. And I think the comment from Ms. Howard kind of hits the nail on the head right there, you know, she speaks to two of the things that our code is trying to achieve, one is, you know, there's there needs to be enough parking and the other is the aesthetics where she would have preferred landscaping as opposed to parking out front and more pavement. So that's what our code's trying to achieve. You know, we're also trying to achieve a balance of allowing more residential uses in our Central Business District. This is an extremely small spot lot. I'm really good on the fence about, you know, is a duplex really gonna fit here when they need six parking spaces on a 30 foot wide by, I think it's 100 or 120 foot deep lot, I can look into that real quick. It's, it's just, you know, we don't have a problem with a duplex per se, it's getting all, you know, all of that on such a small lot is proving to be challenging for this particular property.
So I guess one thought I had, Mr. Coleman, is, as you just noted, the use, you know, per se, is not something that, that staff has concerns with, the use of the, you know, as residential. I guess one thought is, I as the hearing examiner, you know, I'm not an expert engineer. One thought I had was indicating in my decision that, you know, the parking shall be in the alley and it will be at the discretion of city staff as to what, you know, the exact requirement is and how it's being met in terms of, you know, if, like you said, if it's called a den, does that then become a, do I have to count it as a, as a bedroom or not and how does that work? But in a way, I'd be willing to produce a decision that limits parking to the alley and then it's ultimately up to the applicant to convince you and other members of city staff that the plan they come up with for parking works in a sensible. Does that make sense to you, Mr. Coleman, I'll leave a little bit of discretion in your hands, but it's sort of in my mind, by keeping the parking in the alley, I think I've done my due diligence in terms of what the code requires and ensuring that the use doesn't have detrimental impacts on surrounding properties, which I think is the bigger picture that I'm asked to address.
Yeah, unfortunately, I think it, it's gonna be very problematic for them to be able to do it with a 30 foot wide lot.
Right, okay.
Ideally, yeah, I mean, if they could, if they could fit six parking spots in the back, you know, we'd be, we'd be happy as a clam.
Sure. Ms. Carmen, do you have any thoughts on this exhibit, what I've now deemed exhibit H? And further thoughts on the parking issue, I wanted to give you that opportunity.
Well, I'm not sure that we can do six parking spots in the back. If we do move the plans all the way to the road or the property lane, that gives a lot more room in the back, so we could do that because the lot is big enough. But if you look at the other houses on the street, none of them are built up. You know, they're all 20 feet back from the main road, so this one, but it's fine with me if, if we build it up to the front and we fix the parking spots in the back, then I guess that's what we'll, we'll need to work on, but I guess if we had parking spots in the front and the back, I guess that's not possible. But we would have no problem landscaping and making it look nice, I mean, that's not an issue with any concerns there. It's better than any house on the street for the most part. So I, we'll just have to make it work with, with moving it and moving it up to the property line.
Okay. Thank you.
If you'll allow me to share my screen, I can show what the existing block looks like.
Sure.
So is it sharing the screen?
Yes.
So the house in, the area in yellow is the existing house that has been demolished. And so you can see that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna erase that so you can see better. You can see that the rest of the houses are roughly 20 feet or so. You can see that the rest of the houses are roughly twenty feet or so.
Setback.
But they're all, but they're all existing non-conforming, you know, twenty to twenty-five feet, I would say. Um, they're all existing non-conforming this, you know, according to our comprehensive plan and our um, municipal code, this block is intended to become commercial.
Right. Someone's got to make the first move.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Well, I think I I understand the situation. Anything further uh, from you, Mr. Coleman?
No.
And Ms. McGowan, anything further uh, from you in your office there? Okay, um, and just to verify, does not appear we have any members of the public that have joined us, uh, correct? I'm getting nods. Okay, so um, certainly a few things I need to think about, but as a general matter, uh, having reviewed the information that was provided in advance of the hearing, that additional comment that we all just looked at and the testimony I've heard here today, uh, I don't foresee any issue with ultimately issuing a decision here in the next ten business days, approving the proposal uh, with the recommended conditions. Uh, and I'll have to think through the language I'm going to employ, I guess specifically on the parking issue. Um, but ultimately, the plan would be to uh, to issue a decision, uh, recommending approval. Sorry, issue a decision approving the project. Uh, and I think the applicant will have to work with city staff more thoroughly on how the parking works. But uh, the requirements will be what they are, and I'll I'll be very clear in my decision as to uh, my take on what the requirements are so that everyone is is on the same page as to uh, what needs to happen to move forward. So I think with that, we can go ahead and end today's hearing. And I think I'm back in Seidra Woolley next week, I believe. I think. Okay.
Yeah, June sixth, we have another conditional use.
Excellent. Okay, June sixth. So with that, we'll end today's hearing. Uh, thank you, everyone. I wish everyone safety and good health uh, moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.